Six thirty, I'm gonna call to order, uh, the Board of Attorney for Tuesday, February twenty twenty-four. Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Cox?
President.
Alderman Hudson?
President.
Alderman Wilkins?
President.
Alderman Deckard?
President.
Alderman Rogers?
President.
If there are women standing, if you can inform me, we've got here. Please, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That moves us now down to Congress for citizens. At this time, we're taking a Congress to choose.
I wanna commend Tara and Robert on going to the chamber meeting and everything they said was on point. I've already talked to Tara about this, but when you guys decide tonight if you're gonna make this a four-way stop out here, you're gonna have to put a big stop sign in the middle of that four-way that says it's a four-way stop. Or do something. Tara, I know you said you're gonna paint it, but that ain't gonna make any difference to people. And am I still on the Board of Adjustment? Does anybody know? I know you're making a bunch of new appointments to that tonight.
Um, no. I think the term is pardon, right?
I have no idea. Okay, just wanted to check.
No, thank you, yeah.
And I guess my other question is about printer contract. Is, is it, with what you're paying in over-lease for your colored printers, still cheaper than what it would've been to have a local printer print them?
Print what?
Okay, the newsletters and stuff, so, okay, just wanted to check, thanks.
And when you, I mean, when you have it, you can have the on-demand for that two copies that you need that are colored.
Yeah.
When you take the convenience of being able to do that instant need, that you gotta pay for that base price for it anyways?
Yeah, whatever, but, I just, you know, I mean, yeah, whatever. I've done a lot of copier contracts over the years for other businesses and stuff, and so I just was curious, so, anyway, thank you.
That's a good question. Um, any other Congress citizens? I have had none, my email.
I haven't.
Okay, then moves on to the consent agenda. I approve it as a group unless a request to separate more or more out. A is the Board of Attorney meeting minutes, B is the Public Works and Utilities Committee meeting minutes, C is the General Government Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, uh, D is the Collector's Report, E is the Treasurer's Report, and F is the Activity Report. I approve the consent agenda, any terms? Second. F, first and second, to approve the consent agenda, in entirety, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. That moves us to item six, accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I would entertain a motion, if there's no question for thoughts on it, uh, for a total of approving, a total of accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for four hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents.
I updated this afternoon at some point.
That's what's in my file. That's what I got.
Like three-thirty this afternoon, and I get a different call.
Four oh five five seven three.
Yeah.
I believe it must've been up there.
We don't like to look at it.
What's the one that changed, they changed it?
Yeah, we don't see it, what do you all have for your own?
It should be online, isn't it not?
It is, that's, I pulled up the online one.
That's what it says. So, it would be, I don't know what the difference is, I had to make the other one over this this one this evening, so, if the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for four hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents.
So I move that we approve the accounts payable for four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents.
Second. The first and second to approve the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for four hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes, moves to action agenda. Finance, uh, Centrale Wastewater Reimbursement, request number seventeen. This is also the level sixteen from DNR, and it's the final one, I believe, is that right?
This is the final for the closeout of the wastewater project.
So, I'm gonna have a celebratory something, I don't know what it would be, so, I'll tell you right now. I asked, I won't say if someone would come and guest speak about the project, but he can't be found, so, keep on moving.
I move we approve the wastewater reimbursement request number seventeen, the final one.
Second.
The first and second to approve, request number seventeen, level number sixty for DNR, as the final, uh, payment request, motion, uh, has been the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. Okay, that moves to legal. Uh, motion for the mayor to sign an MPUA PSA.
This is a service agreement for the electric form.
The first and second to, uh, motion with mayor to sign the MPUA PSA agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. That moves to motions to install stop signs at Sneed and Rollins intersection. I think we do probably need to make sure that all the others, uh, as we do this, that we put up it's a four-way stop, and put that on the other stop signs on the, on the upright to make sure that that's, people, you know, were notified from all four directions that it's a four-way stop now, if that makes sense.
And this isn't gonna be immediate, um, we're gonna put out a lot of information that this is happening, we'll make sure we talk to James, make sure we get an article in the paper, um, we'll make sure that the information's out there, we'll put it on Facebook and website, and try to get it out as much as possible, and talking to Harlem, they're going to stop and educate when people run stop sign, they're not gonna immediately start ticketing.
Well, how long are we gonna give warnings for that? I could see me running this thing, I mean, I could see every one of us in here running the stop sign.
It'll be enough time for you to understand.
It's your third time you get stopped, Donnie, you're gonna get a ticket.
You're gonna get allowed for a long learning curve to need for some people?
Yes.
Okay.
If you cause an accident, though, um...
I'll just wait when I go by, let the trailer up, oops. It'll take a while, I mean...
When Donnie gets stopped the third time, he gets a ticket.
Right in front of the police station.
I do know a bigger stop sign is gonna go up there if you guys vote on it. Most stop signs in town are thirty inches, um, he'll be installing at thirty-six inch.
You could put stop signals, you know.
Um, so Phil said that he does have flash and wax that he can install on the stop sign. If you wanna temporarily put those on.
Probably for the first sixty days or so, ninety days, we'd have it older than we'd be taking off, and the locals will, that are used to it not being a stop sign by that point, will be reminded, so...
And it's gotta be better.
Me and Donnie included.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I should entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we install a stop sign at Sneed and Rollins intersection.
Second. The first and second to install a stop sign at the intersection of Sneed and Rollins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's not gonna look good in court either, is it? Sir, I didn't know that stop sign was good.
Yeah, and you voted on it.
How about the, how many warnings do you need?
It probably both.
That moves us to item C, motion to accept the five-year lease agreement for the copying machines that you wanted to talk about, um, and which was the one that we thought that we were interested in doing, did we?
I believe it consists of the others from Marco, to the entering of the firm of Marco.
That's what I remember, that's what makes sure we're on the same page of that.
Lowest price.
Marco was lowest price.
Yeah.
So I move that we, uh, accept a five-year lease agreement with copying machines with Marco.
Second. The first and second to accept the five-year lease agreement for copying machines with the company of Marco, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes. That moves us to D, Amendment to City Code, legal, uh, Amendment to City Code concerning meetings, records, votes regarding to the state open meetings and records law, this is an ordinance, bill number what?
Two-five-two-eight.
Two-five-two-eight.
And just to kinda give a little bit of, so, um, at, not this past meeting, but last month, um, Harlem brought up some good points with the sunshine law, our city code did not match the, um, charges that the sunshine law allows for for charging for, uh, public records requests, so this just updates us that we align with the state statute.
And we could, we could process a fee for, for the question information.
Right.
The way I read it, it's ten cents a page not to exceed the hourly rate of an employee, I mean, it's a whole paragraph, that's a sentence.
That's a big part of it, yeah.
I move that bill number two-five-two-eight be given its first reading by title only.
Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-eight be given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, first read, please.
An ordinance amending section two dash one subsection nineteen dash L of the Centralia City Code being the city of Centralia written policy concerning meetings, records, and votes in regard to the state open meetings and records law. I move that bill number two-five-two-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-eight be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, second read, please.
An ordinance amending section two dash one subsection nineteen L of the Centralia City Code being the city of Centralia written policy concerning meetings, records, and votes in regard to the state open meetings and records law. I move that bill number two-five-two-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-eight be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, pass, and roll call vote please.
Alderman Cox?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Bill number two-five-two-eight passes, ordinance number?
Three-one-eight-one.
That moves us to item E, legal, under Bright Speed, Century Tel broadband services franchise agreement.
So, um, Bright Speed bought Century Tel, and Century Tel agreements with the city have expired, so these are just, um, two new agreements. They are different, one is for Century Tel broadband services, and the other is Century Tel of Missouri. So that's why there's two of them, why I've passed them.
Anything major with this?
No, I sent them to Sydney, and she says they're just general franchise agreements, and she's fine with them.
Is there a agreement somewhere to the bill number two?
Yes.
I'd be giving, I would be, I would take a motion for bill number two-five-two-nine to give its first reading by title only. I move that bill number two-five-two-nine be given its first reading by title only. Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-nine be given its, uh, first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, first read, please, sir. An ordinance granting a franchise to Bright Speed Broadband LLC, FKA Century Tel Broadband Services LLC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, Bright Speed, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-two-nine be given its second reading by title only. Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-nine be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, second read, please. An ordinance granting a franchise to Bright Speed Broadband LLC, FKA Century Tel Broadband Services LLC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill two-five-two-nine be adopted by roll call vote. Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-two-nine be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote please.
Alderman Cox?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Bill number two-five-two-nine passes, we need another, we need another vote, uh, ordinance number three-one-eight-two. That moves to F, excuse me. I'll entertain a, uh, motion for reading, uh, by title only.
I move that bill number two-five-three-zero be given its first reading by title only.
Second. The first and second for bill number two-five-three-zero be, uh, given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, second read, please, first read, please.
An ordinance granting a franchise to Bright Speed Missouri LLC, FKA Century Tel of Missouri LLC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliate, uh, affiliates, Bright Speed, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-three-zero be given its second reading by title only.
Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-three-zero be given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, second read, please.
An ordinance granting a franchise to Bright Speed Missouri LLC, FKA Century Tel of Missouri LLC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, Bright Speed, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two-five-three-zero be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. The first and second to bill number two-five-three-zero be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote.
Alderman Cox?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Four.
Alderman Rogers?
Alrighty, that moves us to old business. We have the old business to discuss. Alright, it looks, move, it moves us then, I close old business, we'll move to new business, any new business? I have one that was brought up, um, about the parking over here by Allen Street Diner, I mean, Allen Street Social, down the side of it, where they have the apartments on the end there, where those, there's two apartments on the end, one upstairs and one downstairs, and where there's events and so forth, like Anchafest, wherever it may be, they live there, but can't park because the, the parking gets taken, and wanted to know if we would consider, uh, potentially, putting up a, uh, a resident, you know, spot, two of them, for those two things there for people to live there. Just wanna bring it up, I don't know, maybe, you know, we'll probably check in about it, make sure what it'd be, whatever your thoughts would be over there, with the police department side of it.
There's apartments all around there. None of the other ones are designated, as far as I know, for apartment parking.
There's apartments upstairs, I guess, I guess, all upstairs, all downtown, maybe, yeah, it would be.
I mean, I can understand the concern. But how do we do it for all of downtown, right?
That would be hard to do, I think, that part of it would be. Those, I don't think have, they don't have parking on the backside of them, a lot of the others do, with the business owners and tenants who have, I don't know, but I'm not sure, but, 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 how many of those are like that, how many are not, I don't know, you could take a step to that, so...
I know we've had people complain before, uh, that lived in the apartments upstairs and they couldn't park on Allen Street because the businesses were using up the spots, or the customers of the businesses were using up the spots. I'm not sure what the resolution would be about.
Yeah, I don't see how you do it.
That's downtown looking, I mean...
Yeah, the basis of downtown is business, not residential.
I know it's a little bit of a walk, but we can go to the city parking lot, right there, down on, on the road.
Yeah, that's, I'll find, I scrolled up. Pretty, pretty, pretty hard to specifically pick out a couple of places to keep it for all.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe did something, we'd have to, here's a designated spot.
I think most businesses even have concerns about, about having park, parking. Well, businesses, I'll, I'll make this statement, businesses need to have their employees park on the inner circle of the, of the square, and save that parking for, uh, other, the patrons, uh, in front of the businesses.
Yeah, but during Anchafest, you can't do that.
Oh, well, Anchafest is a completely different...
Yeah, I know, but I thought that's what you said.
No, 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 she said there's, when they have events and different things, people park there, when it gets filled up, like, you know, if you have a business doing it well, which they've been right now, they get busy all the other streets and everything, so, that's kinda why, kinda, people got brought up, so, but I wanna bring it, that's new business, I'm not gonna...
Uh, we'd have to know how many spots we would need to figure something out, but I'm not sure what to do, you know, because...
I, I think it's, I think it would become a, uh, a...
Absolutely. Our police would be over there all the time picketing somebody and trying to decide if they were gonna tow somebody.
It's a whole number, I think.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, that's a hard one to solve, I think, and...
I don't think there's a downtown area that doesn't have that problem.
Yeah.
I haven't seen, I think, Plumby Road Glaces, I mean, where they have, there's any parking there. They do the backs a lot of times, I mean, they have back entrance, but, uh, I haven't seen the front, but, I've seen one hour, two hour, thirty minute parking, all that kinda stuff in front of businesses or banks or whatever, but, haven't seen tenant parking, other than less using the hotel complex where they post that, so people don't, don't have visitors, they don't want their parking. But I wanna bring it up, as I said, I would. So I think with the discussion, what we've had so far, it looks like it's pretty hard to, it'd be pretty, pretty challenging to come up with a solution, be, be fair and actionable.
We don't wanna create another problem solving that issue.
No. May not be a bear one to this one. Anything else in the discussion, any new business? Okay, discussion golf cart permits, number nine.
Yeah, so we had talked about that a little bit at the last meeting, um, we're not gonna be able to vote on this tonight, but we can talk about it. So we had talked about increasing the permit cost of twenty dollars, and I feel like you guys had pretty well agreed that that was a good idea, to increase the permit cost, um. Uh, one of the other items that was brought up, and I talked to Chief Patton today a little bit about it, um, was there was a little bit of a discussion on where the fee would be collected. Um, I think I, that there's two turns of thought on this, um, the money is brought to City Hall because we keep the money here, so, it kinda makes sense to have them come over here and pay, but then to have them go to two different places when they do that, so, um, I wanna kinda talk about it a little bit, if we're increasing the fee, they're not gonna need to kinda get change in most cases, because it's twenty dollars.
Well, the other thing I was, didn't really discuss was people can come on a Saturday and have it done, if they do it before it's done.
I'm gonna turn off, and they have time to do it, yeah.
I mean...
I think that makes sense, it, it, it's streamlined for the customer, the citizen that wants to have one, and then for the artist, just go do it one place, and means it's a round number, it makes it a lot easier to make changes versus seventeen fifty or something like that.
So I'll get that off for next month's meeting, and we'll just increase, use the ordinance to increase it.
The, the golf cart permit, the golf cart term, does that include ATVs and side-by-sides and all the other?
UTVs and all of that, yeah.
All the other stuff, so...
The, the actual ordinance is for low-speed vehicles, golf carts, and utility vehicles.
You can't, you can't have a staff all the time, see, though.
Let me ask this question.
There's some things out there.
I, it's just a question I've had asked, and we, we were talking about side-by-sides. Those things damn sure aren't low-speed vehicles. You know, but some of them run seventy mile an hour.
Well, I think, I think at the end of the day, you're gonna have to fall back on the ordinance, and if it's included in the ordinance, then you better change the ordinance.
Bingo, I think that we need to probably, because I think that, there's a lot of people with side-by-sides running around town, that, that, these vehicles...
I will say this, though, too, I don't think we have any, uh, I don't think we have a bunch of people running around, jumping curves and...
I, I must say that, I haven't seen that in a while.
I don't think I should. So, I mean...
The, the day's coming, I mean, it's been very, very close, somebody's gonna get splattered on twenty-two. I mean, there's nothing you can do, I mean, and I thought about that, you know, you can walk across, same thing, or you can ride a bike the same way, but, so everybody's even there, but, I'm telling you what, they come up there and stop real quick, and then they go again, and, uh, they don't, I mean, you can't do that with, I guess you can do that with a car or truck, but, and then they're going down twenty-two also.
That's, but that's against all...
That's, that's, not only that's against the law, it's rude. I mean, but, you know what I'm saying, but some of them go sixty miles an hour, you can't see them.
Yeah, well, there's a lot, there's a lot of golf carts that go to golf courses, uh, on twenty-two.
But that's, that isn't illegal. They can cross twenty-two, they can't drive along twenty-two.
So it sounds like you're...
We might need to define low speed a little bit better in our, uh, in our code. So I might, I'll get with Sydney on that.
But it sounds like you're alright with collecting it all over there, means we're, we're, that'd work for you guys. It wouldn't open up Saturdays for people that work early to, to get it done, but, you know.
Yeah, they can come up whenever.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we want the limit to side-by-sides?
As far as the speed goes?
Well, there are, isn't it, say something about, you should only, you can only drive so fast?
Well, they're supposed to be there to follow the rules of the law, I mean, the rule.
It does say that, um, the vehicle shall be operated at speeds of less than forty-five miles per hour.
What about anywhere in town, their speed?
But that's the only, well, right, like, the top speed is at thirty-five.
I mean, they have to buy...
Forty-five just as you're heading out of town, just before it turns to Z, it's forty-five, so you actually can't drive a normal golf cart down there.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, uh, the, uh, this, by the way, the, the speed is, is one thing, but, you know, they, they need to be made to operate just like a car on the road, I mean, if they're gonna be driving, they're on forty-five or fifty, they need to be warned, you know, and...
But is it a change in ordinance, or is it just making sure we're following our...
I'm, I'm not seeing anything in here, and, um,
So what is slow?
Quickly going through it, so...
So for the place department, what is this low? But, but the bottom line is, most should be going, if you're going the speed limit,
It's a viewpoint, right?
Most places twenty-five or thirty mile an hour in town.
Some of these golf carts can go, can go for twenty miles, and I'm sure...
Mine goes twenty-two.
Right.
This says they're only supposed to be operated on the city streets between the hours of sunrise and sunset, too.
Unless they have lights. I was in there at one point.
I've been riding dirt, chief.
Oh, unless equipped with proper lighting, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to...
Forget it.
Yeah, you have to have lights, just like the trucks.
Oh, wait, it says utility vehicles operated for agricultural purposes or industrial on-premises purposes between the official sunrise and sunset on the day of operation unless equipped with proper lighting.
So, so, I think, all I gotta tell you, I'm gonna get a bag of feed, a tractor, and it's a farm vehicle, so I don't know. That's a, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, I don't think, I mean, I don't, we haven't had anything that's, people just need to operate whatever they're operating on the roads, uh, that meet the requirements that we have properly, probably, and we haven't been able to make any errors.
Harlem, do they have some golf carts with lights?
They have golf carts, I should clarify that. That's a big, we've been operating them.
When, when I was on the road, I don't remember seeing people tool around on golf carts.
I've never seen any.
No, I, I don't know, maybe some of them down south, in some of the more exclusive communities, maybe, but, I personally never saw people ride around on golf carts. Except for when they were operating as a business downtown, and they had to get a business license to give people rides on them to and from bars or parking lots or whatever.
Talking to Columbia?
Yes.
No, basically, like a shuttle, you know, it looks like a shuttle.
Downtown, mainly on game days and stuff like that.
Now, that moves us to ten, uh, appointments, I've got. I've got A, B, C, D are appointments for, well, I'll have to do them all, we'll do them all. I got, A is an appointment, uh, they take a motion to appoint Dan Hamilton for a one-year term on the Board of Adjustment.
Some move? Second.
A first and a second to appoint Dan Hamilton to the Board of Adjustment for a one-year term, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Mr. Hamilton's on the floor. Okay. Uh, B is a two-year term for Board of Adjustment for Jerry Hensley, uh, appoint him, I'll take a motion to allow me to be able to do that.
Some move?
Second. A first and a second to appoint Jerry Hensley to a two-year term on Board of Adjustment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. That moves us to C, appoint Todd Holland to a three-year term on Board of Adjustment. Second, a first and a second to appoint Todd Holland to a three-year term on Board of Adjustment, all in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed, passes. That moves us to D, appoint Danny Rush to a four-year term on the Board of Adjustment.
Some move?
Second, a first and a second to appoint Danny Rush to a four-year term on Board of Adjustment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes. That moves us to, I believe that puts the Board of Adjustment in good standing, is that correct? Okay, uh, appoint Jana Hoffman to a two-year term on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone, which has not been effective, we're getting that brought up to speed where it'll be in place in our meeting, and they'll set up, uh, hierarchy, so. Uh, that's what that'd be for Jana Hoffman, for a two-year term on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. Second, a first and a second to appoint Jana Hoffman to a two-year term on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. I have another point, which is F, does everybody understand what the, the Enhanced Enterprise Zone is, what that committee is?
No.
I didn't really either until it was put up, so I'll let Tara explain that.
Uh, basically, the Enhanced Enterprise Zone is an area inside and outside of Centroya city limits, um, that has a special, um, taxing benefit for any industrial type of business that would want to come into Centroya. For, I believe, five years, they would get a sixty percent tax abatement for five years. Uh, but it's qualifying businesses, they would make an application to the Enhanced Enterprise Zone, they would, uh, meet, go over the applications, and decide if that business met the requirements, um, all of this is done through the state, it's got to all be approved, it's quite a process.
And they only meet when it's needed, right?
Right, well.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Once a year.
It doesn't need anyone needed.
You want to address the same thing once a year?
Yes, all boards and committees should meet once a year, so, we're going to try and get all that back on track.
Yeah, that's why we've got a whole list up here.
Do we have anybody who's applying for the Enhanced Enterprise Zone?
Uh, no, we did have someone who thought they might, so we wanted to make sure we got our guts in the right.
Be nice for them to meet, do every time, sure, and people there are still doing something that needs figuring out, that fits, but, be good, so. F would be an appointment of Dan Hamilton to finish Glenn Brown's term until November twenty-twenty-fourth on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Some move?
Second. A first and a second, third, uh, to appoint Dan Hamilton to finish Glenn Brown's term until November twenty-twenty-fourth on the Enhanced Enterprise Zone, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it passes. That moves us to the eleven, City Administrator, you want to report?
All right, can I report? Um, if you have any questions, let me know, I'm going to bring my laptop in here, so I apologize for that.
Do you recall that ARPA application?
I wrote it down, so don't have the titles of the ARPA applications, but I do.
Just look at four.
Hmm?
Just look at four.
Um, so, three of them were renewed from the last, um, go-around, and, I really don't even remember. Has to do with ADA doors for City Hall and the Police Department, um. The lift station on Orchard. Um, what was the third one? I'll have to get back to you on that one, uh, the new ones I applied for is for the, um, the back machine, not the back machine, what was it? Uh, sewer machine, sewer van, to replace our, um, engaged equipment there, and, um, the other is to, um, see about purchasing a piece of land for a possible, uh, public safe, combined public safety building, to help out with that. And then also, I helped Earl Bennett with two park, um, ARPA applications, and he got those submitted, and those were for, um.
Close for the, the well, the water, deep water well for the irrigation for the golf course, and the other was for the infrastructure, the pool, uh, plumbing and infrastructure. Over there, because a lot of that infrastructure, the plumbing is original to the, when it was built.
Hope they were pretty, uh, interested in park on the North Side of Town, too.
That, that's also in there.
That's a good one.
There's some combined, um, so, um, I put the numbers in there on what we're applying for. There's six and a half million dollars available, they did receive over a hundred applications again, for a total of fifty-four million dollars in applications, so this is highly competitive. Uh, but they're still hopeful to have decisions made by spring, so. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll know, we got money this time of year.
We have to, the law is presented, I mean, we, we're trying to get our share.
And I did separate that away, if, you know, maybe even if we got, you know, every little bit counts, especially on some of the stuff, because it's, uh, like the ADA doors, that's, um, not totally general fund money, the one out there would be general fund, and PD would be general fund, so, I mean, anything that hits our general fund, but we can get help on definitely, definitely help, we're asking for. Yes, sir.
Pardon me, has the city or any of the other local applied entities received any of the ARPA funds that were approved in the first go-around?
I have not been told if anyone has received any, I know that we have not received ours yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll, okay, so, basically, it's a spend first, be reimbursed after you spend, so that's, that's a big one. We have signed our contract, so.
I would like to take up your time, more of this discussion later, though.
Okay.
Thank you. That's very generous.
Anything else from the City Administrator, or for all the City Administrator?
Not much, if you guys have any questions about it.
Uh, then, you know, that moves to the City Attorney, uh, she's not with us this evening, she's dealing with some, uh, personal family issues, uh, so she wasn't here and notified us, so, thanks for that, so. That moves us, I don't think there's anything hanging after it, it's hot to try, so we're going to go on that, so, that moves us to the item thirteen, City Clerk.
Don't really have a lot, probably Sydney were here, she would be talking about the bills, going on legislation, the programs. Does change all the time, so get little updates, but that's still something to pay attention to. It's all of us, I think, um, next couple of months will be busy, uh, we'll be attending the Missouri City Quakes Conference next month. There's always great training, so we're just going to do that.
Where's that at, where's it being?
Columbia.
Oh, that's ours.
That reminds me, I'm also going to a conference, speaking for it, so I'll be out of the office from Sunday the third, or Wednesday the sixth, and that's by, I couldn't do on the sixth.
And, and, and what was that regarding?
It's the Agrip Conference for, um, Murmeh, it's a pool, uh, insurance pool, basically, conference where they talk about everything that's to deal with, um, insurance pools. I've got some really interesting topics, I'm looking forward to learning more about.
That's, I don't know, I don't know, I need channels to keep up with for those, uh, that network type of service, so. Good, right, that moves us to closed session, routine, I would.
Move we go into a closed session, during the meeting, the Board of Alderman may elect to go into a closed session, hold a closed vote, the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, one, as provided for under section six one zero zero two one one, of the statute of Missouri for legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and number nine, preparation, including any discussion or work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups. Second?
Have a first and a second to go in closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, both of us, please.
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Decker.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four. More on item fifteen, return to open session, we were in closed session, during that time, there were no votes taken, it was information only, and, uh, uh, there, the only vote taken was to, uh, come back into open session. So, that moves us to, as may arise, a senate date for town hall meeting for the use tax, is one of the topics, but then the rest.
So, while we're out and about getting the word out about the use tax, I think that it, um, would be a really good idea to have a public forum to have some back and forth with our residents on any questions they may have on what the use taxes, and a town hall meeting is a really good place to do that, um, we just let everybody know as we're doing these talks with the different civic organizations that, um, around town hall meeting, and try to get people there.
What, what do we decide on, what, what, March thirteenth?
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth.
What time, March thirteenth, say, babe?
For the Rotary meeting.
Oh.
That's the week of the Rotary meeting.
Oh, town hall.
The town hall, they haven't decided yet.
Okay.
What, the election is what day?
Uh, April second.
April second, yes.
It's coming quick now, you know, I mean.
We got that, some people?
Yeah.
So, what, what are we thinking here? Thirteenth, it's probably going to be a night meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be an evening.
Tuesday the nineteenth, that's two weeks prior.
See the nineteenth? How about doing one the nineteenth, and doing a second the following week, a different day? Like the twenty-eighth? Yeah, we're from. I wouldn't give people more than one option.
What night of the week will it be?
Once a Tuesday, once a Thursday.
Okay.
We could always split up, and half of us go to one, half of us do the other.
Just make sure, just make sure representation, to answer questions.
Any objection to doing two?
Not for me, I think you guys agree with that.
I move that we have town halls on the nineteenth and the twenty-eighth at six thirty, or six thirty? Six thirty?
Six thirty. Your second?
A first and a second to have town hall meetings regarding the use tax on March nineteenth at six thirty, and March twenty-eighth at six thirty, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all in passes. That moves us to seventeen.
We got seventeen, we need to set a budget meeting.
Yeah. So we need to set a budget work session meeting, I'd like to, um, just because that can run a little long, plan dinner for that night, and, uh, that way we can work while we eat, and it always makes people a little bit happier, all right? So.
The other question, too, is, do we want to move the? I guess we don't need to, I mean, is there contract stuff, or then we have to do, because the end of our year, then we need to have a meeting, as late as possible?
Uh, the Board of Alderman meeting?
Probably so, right?
So.
Twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Yeah, because the Board of Alderman meeting will fall on the eighteenth, and, um, I'll need to make last minute as we get the taxes and, um, revenues in for that month, final changes to the budget before you guys will want to approve it, so, yeah.
Better make it the twenty-fifth.
Or the twenty-eighth.
I'll be going, I'll be going on February eighth.
You'll be on the twenty-eighth?
I'll be going, I'm pushing for that.
It's March, you know?
Yeah.
So we're wanting to move the entire meeting to the twenty-eighth?
Or we just can have a second meeting?
Or have a second.
That's a lot of meetings for March, but we just scheduled a town hall meeting for the twenty-eighth, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we did.
So, I, I would recommend that we move it, move the general meeting.
The eighteen.
To the, yes, to the twenty, uh, fifth, that gets us towards the end of the month, and worst case scenario, on Thursday, we could set a, um, if need be, something comes up, we're having a town hall, the town hall closes, we could have a proposed meeting and have a meeting that night if there was a need for it. I won't beat you for that, I don't, so, but, I'm just saying, it would save us one, one best meeting for any two town halls and what go on.
Um, so for the budget work session, I was thinking maybe the ninth or the eleventh, since we're here anyway, we could have the committee meetings, and then have a break, and then, um, after you eat, and we go in the budget work session.
Yeah, that would really go for me, because I, I travel, I, I've been moving my travel to Tuesday through Friday, but it's planned by trips, uh, today, so.
What day is that?
Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven, March eleventh.
March eleventh, yeah, come on, babe. A normal committee meeting.
There's you.
A motion to schedule a budget workshop to take place after the committee meetings on March eleventh.
Okay, first.
That's awesome.
A second. A first and a second to have budget meetings to follow on March eleventh, the regular reading, uh, council meeting, uh, for budget purposes and discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's, that would be six thirty, right, six thirty?
Well, six thirty is the committee meetings, so.
It'd be after that, after that.
Okay.
Then I move that we, uh, move the normal Board of Alderman meeting from March eighteenth to March twenty-fifth, same usual start time of six thirty. Second?
A first and a second to move the general meeting to the twenty-fifth, at the same time of six thirty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes.
Was that March twenty-fifth, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to confirm, March eleven, six thirty is our own committee meetings, followed by a budget meeting. March nineteenth, use tax town hall, number one, March twenty-fifth will be the Alderman meeting, the normal Board of Alderman meeting, and then March twenty-eighth, use tax town hall, number two.
So March twenty-fifth, if need be, if there's some budget stuff to get finished or talk about, we could actually do it then if need be, do, after we. So March twenty-fifth, if need be, if there's some budget stuff to get finished or talk about, we could actually do it then, if need be, do, afterward, we'd be planning a meeting, directly after, if we have some stuff to do.
As needed.
As needed.
Yeah.
If we need, you know, because we're all here anyway, we mark off Monday night, so.
Okay.
Okay? That's gonna fall back, in case there's something, just hang on, we're gonna do it, so.
Push comes to shove, we can do one on the twenty-eighth, I know you may not be, you'll do something.
Yeah, we could do something, we have to, sure.
But those are normally ten-minute meetings, so we have to do them anyways.
Yeah.
And we adjourn?
Second, a first and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, please stand adjourned.